Thank you so much for coming out for our Commissioner's Town Hall. And I actually don't have an agenda. Did we bring all of them down?
Well, we just have changes to the agenda.
Okay. I didn't see them on the ledge when I left, so I don't know if maybe they're that. That's fine. Can I just borrow yours for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are there changes to the agenda? Well, I'm calling this meeting to order. And attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matarri, and Duncan. Changes to the agenda?
No changes.
All right. And public comments on our agenda? And yes, there will be much public comment later. But if someone wants to speak now, they can. Okay. And then this is a general discussion of the state of the county's survey results, and respond to questions from the public. So you want to start with the survey?
Yeah, we can do that. These are the survey questions from the fair. We had a booth, and there were forms that people could fill out and give us feedback on. Oh, boy, I got a hunch this thing is done in such a way that...
Put your glasses on.
Safety glasses.
All right. Sarah, I have to ask...
Krista, do you have a knife on you?
How you got this baby? There we go. Nothing like blacking ourselves out.
Actually, this might take the entire time.
Well, it could. You want to go through some, and I'll start organizing some for you?
Yeah. So this, I probably should explain to everybody in case they didn't actually fill one out. Give us your feedback. Are you a Cootney County resident? How would you rate your quality of life in Cootney County? Do you believe Cootney County is growing too fast? What are your concerns and priorities? So it's one through six. What can Cootney County government most improve on? And then for the following services, please rank the level of importance of each service to you and your community. Again, one through nine on that one. And then did you know that two-thirds of the county's budget goes to public safety? Would you like to see more engagement with your county elected officials? And then that's about it. And this one, Sheriff Norris is the best.
He's wrong.
There you go.
Okay. So how would you rate your quality of life in Cootney County? Positive. Is the county growing too fast? Yes. First concern is slow growth. Second is keeping taxes low. Third is properly funding law enforcement. Quit issuing building permits. This alone will preserve green space. More population does not equal better living. Parks and waterways is number one. DMV is number two. And they did not know that two-thirds of the county budget goes to public safety. And would they like to see more engagement? Yes.
Now, I thought what we could do is we can tally up these and provide them at another date available to the public, and just go through some of the comments and questions, because it probably will take a long time to go through every question from everything that...
How many do we have?
We have a fair number.
Like this plus more, so?
Yeah. But we can go through some of the broad issues here.
Properly funding the courts via county share of taxes and fines and forfeiture funds. Specialty courts need more and appropriate funding at the local level. Taking care of its employees. So that's how we can improve. So the question is, what can Cootney County government most improve on? Taking care of its employees.
Yeah.
More oversight required for conflicting road improvement projects. City and county and ITD does not seem to communicate well. County actually does not do roads.
I got one for you here. The government can improve on alcohol and drug programs, including detox.
Okay. You want to go every other one? And Bill, did you want any?
Yeah, we can do that. We can go back and forth.
Okay. Pay more attention to water issues on the prairie.
Reduced regulations are always a good idea. And one of the things that you rarely ever see are people running for office saying, "I'm going to get rid of laws." Right? They always talk about passing laws.
Actually, to that point, I did one time go through our land use code and mark a bunch of stuff that I would be happy to get rid of or re-look at. And so maybe in, at the new year, I'll dig those notes back out and maybe bring that forward. Keeping our county safe.
We need to do better at planning development and help traffic flow and quality of life.
Send them back to California. Bring the 1970s back. I want my Dark Valley back.
Oh, I thought they were going to say MTV.
No.
Commissioners finally making a decision on the fairgrounds. KCSO reevaluating evacuation plans near Silverwood. I'm not familiar with the evacuation plans at Silverwood.
I believe we need to work on keeping Idaho safe and more affordable to Idaho.
The roads and buses, and a better jail system. It's quite a diverse group of comments here.
Yeah. Stop selling off and developing our rural areas. It ruins the quality of life for our area.
Properly managing growth while protecting water supply resources and our way of life.
And if I am not reading, it's because there isn't anything. Law enforcement, crime fighting.
Impact fees for development.
Communication, open, transparent operations.
And we are working on impact fees and trying to get those implemented. Stop building apartment and condo. Well, it's hard to argue with that sometimes.
I know. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of control over that. The traffic lights suck. Don't have any control over that either.
I've heard many government employees can't afford to live in the county. Maybe look for more revenue sources with cities you provide services to. Well, you know, funny you say that. That's something that I think we should try to do, is get the cities to pay, you know, for the cost of the benefits that they're enjoying.
The schools need improving for lots of things. Price of living is absolutely outrageous now. So again, unfortunately, schools, or fortunately, schools are not under our purview.
Yes. Don't move the fairgrounds.
Roads and easy services access.
Infrastructure, keeping pace with growth. If they can't keep up, then buildings should be slowed. Couldn't agree more.
When building, keep the outlining pine trees so you still feel like it's rustic.
Leave fairgrounds where they are. Now, these surveys were given to us at the fair, so that could be part of the impetus for this.
Slowing multifamily housing development, maintaining healthy and thriving downtown district.
Build more low-income or income-controlled apartments. Locals are being priced out of Coeur d'Alene. We can't afford to live here. Well, it is true. The way that growth occurs here, it doesn't pay for itself. And ultimately, the people who live here have to pay for that. And that's why they see their taxes continue to go up.
Hayden Lake Road, east side guardrails. Okay? City of Hayden, or I don't know if Hayden Lake has their own highway department, but whoever's that highway department, please note that. All right. Lowering pricing of housing.
Infrastructure management, the growth of population overly surpasses our infrastructure growth.
I hate condos.
Sheriffs do a great job. Have real child protective services, not just in name.
Developing parks and open space. The prairie is disappearing, and it's like California now. I don't think we're quite there yet.
Limit growth, save the prairie. Five or more acres.
I love this county and North Idaho.
Making sure growth is planned with appropriate infrastructure, support and services, medical, law enforcement, educational, et cetera, and protection of the aquifer and agricultural resources.
Control growth.
Looks like growth is still one of the top issues. Stopping all the illegal fireworks.
Illegal what?
Illegal fireworks. Yes.
Slowing the growth.
Stop hiring people from Western Washington for planning positions. They are trying to turn us into Seattle. Hire locally. Okay. That actually was an interesting comment. Keep your hands off the fairgrounds. I didn't know you could touch them.
We love our sheriff.
Too many apartments, not enough jobs or schools to support this growth. I often wonder what our industry is besides growing farming tract housing.
Locals can't help that we were discovered. Raise impact fees for developers. Cap tax hikes for long-holding property owners, owner homes. Raise your homeowner's exemption. So state, we can, we're working on the impact fees here at a local level, but the state would need to take care of the other things.
On the homeowner's exemption amount?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I trust that that probably would make a difference for a lot of people's taxes, especially those who live here all year long, as opposed to those who don't claim their, the home here as their primary residence.
The, I can't read that. Need a law enforcement agreement contract like Hayden. Can you read that?
The taxpayers need a law enfor...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You know, the taxpayers need a law enforcement contract like Hayden. This one, I don't think this falls under our purview. Oak Crest raises rent from $453 to $999 a month. How can us seniors afford it? It's one of the biggest challenges, I think, you know, is when you retire and you have a limited income, and prices just keep going up. Inflation is devastating people on fixed incomes in this country. There's no question about that.
And I think part of the issue with slowing growth is then the homes that are already here go up in price because the volume is just down. Road upkeep, management of parks, more dog-friendly areas.
Stop building. I believe that's no roads can't accommodate, or roads can't accommodate.
Housing options for income-challenged.
Housing for graduates.
Better governance, better people in office, better elected officials. That's how Cootney County government can improve.
Wow. I think that's going to be up to the voters to decide those things. Stop building.
Roads and infrastructure.
Too much new building. Roads and schools are not prepared. Worried about draining, draining on the aquifer. So I don't know if that's draining the water out of the aquifer, or the water that goes into the aquifer.
School districts funding and ensuring proper education.
Okay, here's one that we can be tasked with. Lower prices on everything. Slow the people coming in.
Keep our police funded.
Not enough police.
Did I already say lowering speed limits on Highway 41?
No.
Okay.
But I don't think we can do that, can we?
We cannot.
No. Slow down the growth. Support our law enforcement and fire departments.
Stop the sprawl and limit growth. Infrastructure is already maxed. It is not up to us residents to provide housing for the tidal wave of growth, third-generation North Idaho.
Would you have an idea of what that is?
Yeah, yeah, I still are.
An elected official?
Yes. I probably would skip that one.
Taking care of the rural areas like Metamott.
Property law enforce, properly funded law enforcement. Give them more money, please, and benefits.
We can improve on bureaucratic red tape. I think that is something that all of us would like to see reduced.
Yeah, that's what I got right here. Get rid of laws. Focus on increasing quality of life for law enforcement.
Housing should be affordable and abundant. Make it easier to build.
Continue to listen to opinions of community members, and when allowing development and growth, require larger property size and limit multifamily residents.
Improve all county government pay. Improve traffic flow, more mass transit, and something health improvement. Environmental health, I believe.
Replace trees that are cut down for homeowners' views. Slow growth, no apartments. Stop cutting down tall firs.
We're almost done. Have 20-acre land minimums everywhere.
Stop erosion on Spokane River. Boats go too fast and are a danger to kayakers. We have to be off the river in kayaks where we get run over by, or we get run over where the waves are extreme. Erosion of beaches and something, the shorelines. Sorry.
Yeah. I think a lot of that, too, is driven by traffic.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Too many decisions are based off politics and not actually really needed, real needed solutions to growth and problems. And then focusing on quality of life for law enforcement and increasing pay, equipment, and benefits for them. That's all I got.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and we'll tally these up and make them available to the public, because there's a number of additional questions and rankings and so forth. And I think people will find it interesting. Some of the comments, I think, are very valid. The gist of it, of course, is people don't seem to, don't feel like we're not growing too fast, meaning that we, they feel like we grow too fast. And they'd like to see some sort of mechanisms to manage that more effectively. That's the way I read a lot of the comments.
So you want to open it up to comments?
Well, we can start. Does anyone have any questions they would like to ask the commissioners about policy, anything like that? If not, you know, if it's okay. Commissioner Brooks, did you have anything that you wanted to say? This might be the last town hall that, that you'll be participating in, because your term ends at the end of this year.
At least, at least. At least for a while. I, you know, I see us becoming like Bend, Oregon, or Carmel, California, where it's a lovely place, and it's unlivable in terms of the cost of living. The housing is out of sight. The crowding is getting terrible. One solution is quit fixing the roads. Quit building roads. When people end up with sitting in a traffic jam for an hour, they'll quit coming here. But honestly, we keep building roads and making it very easy to get from A to B, you know? And if we don't do that, we get, people get upset about it. But when you, when you do that, then people come here. So it's kind of a problem. I, the last place I lived before I came to the Lower 48, I had a four-wheeler. That was it, period. You know, that's what you use to get around 12 months out of the year. And then the people decided they wanted to build a road. And the first thing that happened was they had truck wrecks, and dogs got ran over. So sometimes we don't realize paradise when we have it. But right now, here, when we got here over 20 years ago, I said to my wife, "If this develops, our little place that we just bought's going to be way more valuable in terms of dollars than you'll believe." She goes, "Yeah, what if it doesn't develop?" I said, "We'll have a lovely place to live." Well, you can see which one has happened. Our, our place has quadrupled or more in value. But now that I'm 74, my wife is 75, and we don't have a lot of money, and we're going to be dependent upon, in large part, social security. And you know what? Very soon, if the trends continue, we won't be able to pay our taxes. So the home that we bought really isn't our home at this point. And I, I would love to see all of Idaho move to a sales tax-based income source. I mean, that would just make, if you spend the money, then you get to pay sales tax. If you want to sit in your nice home and enjoy it, you don't have to, you know, your, your bill's not going to go through the roof. But politicians like what we've had. They like what they know. They like what's easy. So that'll be a hard sell, believe me. Anyway, I've enjoyed being a commissioner, but I don't want to do it again.
Is that the only type of questions or statements or stuff like that?
No, you can ask if you want. If you want to speak and ask questions, you're welcome to go up to the podium and, and ask questions.
I want to know how many people here are baseball fanatics. Well, my goodness.
I'm two bottom of the third.
I had a tryouts with the Angels a long time ago, when the dinosaurs roamed. So I'd like to bring up something. I'd like to know what the county commissioners will do. So last week, on October 24th, I wrote down the time at 07:28. I was taking my boy Logan to Christian school in Post Falls, and I was coming down from Hayden. And I got up to Honeysuckle, and there was a red light. And I'm always observant. I noticed a black SUV coming up on my right side, plain unit, and lo and behold, pulls up, and it's looking at the truck, my truck. It's kind of decorated a little bit. And then it looks up at the window, and it sees me and my boy. Light changes. I'm heading southbound on 95 from Honeysuckle. I'm, I'm going to end up turning on Prairie. In the meantime, it's a quarter-mile stretch. So as I'm going up, I'm realizing, okay, we're just hugging each other back and forth. So I speed up two or three miles an hour, not to go more than five, and that black SUV pulls up. So then I drop back, and I drop my speed, three or two or three miles an hour below what I was going. And then that vehicle backed up. So I sped up again, two or three miles an hour, and that vehicle sped back up. So then I just coasted, because there was no one behind me. And lo and behold, before we got to a very short distance before Prairie, that black SUV did a hard pull in front of me, which was an unsafe lane change, then did another hard pull to the left to get in the left lane to turn. This is all on cameras. The intersections have cameras. We all have cameras. There's cameras in my neighborhood. There's cameras by my house. So the thing is, is that that's kind of an act of road rage, wouldn't you say? A little bit, not letting someone over? Would that be, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
I would presume, according to what you've said.
Okay. According to what I say. Commissioner Duncan, did you say that's a form of road rage?
Sounds like it.
Okay. Now let me ask all of you here. Speak up, and everyone watching. Do you think that's beholding of a senior lawman to do that? Because I know, I know recruits, they saw someone try to get over. It would be department policy to show courtesy, and it's a courtesy driver that you would back up and let the person get over, or go past them. But you don't lock somebody into a lane for a quarter of a mile, and I gave 30 blinks. That was Sheriff Norris. I'd like to know what you're going to do, because I'm making a formal complaint to all of you right now. Also, I want to add in, some time ago, last year, when I walked into the sheriff's office, when we were buddies, friends, the most hardcore supporter for him...
Jim.
On, on my truck, talked to the church, men's Bible study, the whole church went, walked all the neighborhoods for him. He has $2,000 cash loan of mine, and then people want to say whatever they want to say about me. I can park my truck anywhere I want if I go to church. I go to real life 12 times a week. That's 50 times a month. So after I talked to him about the FBI from Washington, D.C., nefarious FBI and CIA, came here to investigate, I walked in his office, and we were buds at the time. I said, "Hey, Bob, you know, the FBI from Washington, D.C. is here." Of course, I'm not going to tell you how, I know, okay? But everybody knows I have a background in military intelligence, among other things, too. Okay? So here's the thing. He said he didn't know. Okay, fine, you're asleep. I said, "What about your deputy, or your sheriff's up north?" "Well, I didn't hear anything." "Well, I'm now reporting to you, Sheriff, that the FBI from Washington, D.C. was doing nefarious activities up here, and you didn't investigate." I told him about the veterans getting poisonous shots that makes your emotions go like this that came from Pastor Dave Scarlett, who's a former Marine on His Glory. It's a Christian network. That was three summers ago. I walked in there to tell him about that, because I didn't want his men shooting a vet. We have 16,000 to 23,000 vets in this county. I didn't want them to shoot a vet who served their country honorably, whether it's two years or 30 years, like me, and end up getting capped because he's in a depressive mood or an angry mood. Not to give him anything special, but just a, you know, a little bit more patience. And those, that's the main thing. But I also told him about the FBI, and I said, "Well, I'm reporting that to you, that they're doing nefarious." That is a, a report of a crime of federal agents doing nefarious activities, and you have a fiduciary duty to investigate. If you don't investigate, that is misprison of treason. Misprison of treason. It's the same thing as treason. You didn't investigate it. Okay? You claim you did, and I called you out at, what's that little town up there that he took away authority from? Anybody?
Spirit Lake.
Spirit Lake, okay? You said he did. Well, I'd like to know. You can find out in 30 seconds. Give me the report number, Sheriff Norris. Now. Don't try to squeeze in with your CIA buds and your FBI buds from California for 10 years. Second of all, you started sending plainclothes guys in a plainclothes SUV in my driveway right after I reported the nefarious FBI from Washington, D.C., and they came to my house two times. Then another time, there was a black, unmarked SUV up on my front lawn. Then another time, you had a squad of armed deputies at my house. I was taking a nap, fighting two cancers. I turned my phone down. I left to go to Super 1 to get some grub for my boy and I. While I was there, they were shut down pretty bad. My phone was still down. I eventually did call the call from my guest, the lead deputy there. There was a whole squad of armed deputies there. My son's autistic, okay? He was home alone. I tell him never answer it. You're watching the sides and the rear of my house, behind every tree in my house, and you're pounding on my door. Thank goodness they didn't break it down. Thank goodness they didn't break it down.
Jim?
Okay, I'm just about done. Okay? I'm making a formal complaint. Okay? So here's the thing. And then you left. That all happened right after I reported the FBI to him and about the poisonous shots, and he gave me a cease-to-go thing. So that was road rage there. I'm making a formal complaint. Okay? On everything I just stated. Okay? And I'll tell you nothing, too. I never seen the guy for four years. Never invited me in for a cheap cup of coffee. Now I see him every other day. And that young lady over there, she had one of those tracking devices on her car. So this is getting out of control. And I'm sick and tired of seeing banners spray painted, or ripped down the throat, or dozens and dozens and dozens of signs stolen. And I'm making that a formal report, too, tonight. The buck stops anywhere. It stops with Leslie, with Commissioner Matarri, with Commissioner Brooks for the moment, with mayors, with the sheriff, with the president, with the governor, who's worthless. The buck ends there. He may not be doing it, but his minions are. So I'm done.
How long ago?
How long ago did this, this vehicle thing? How long ago did this vehicle thing that you first described happen?
Thursday, the--
My hearing aids overload with you.
Okay, sorry, okay, okay. Thursday, last Thursday, okay, the 24th.
Okay.
At 07:28. And here's this. You know what's going to happen? You're not going to find nothing. Require his vehicle, you know, the tape that they have on there, and require his body cam. That's a formal request. You guys know I don't use a computer, you know that already. I can't afford computer or internet.
Jim, Jim, I appreciate the stuff that you've been experiencing, and I'm sorry about that. The commissioners have no direct oversight to the sheriff, but you've made a public records request, and I can help fill that for you.
Okay. And I also made another request, two times someone helped me, but they can't do it no more, it's someone else, they're gone now, about the activity on my house, because I feel like they don't respond to my house.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Anyone else would like to make a comment, ask a question? Come on up.
How are you guys doing?
Good.
I was just curious, comments, it's all about slow the growth, slow the growth. So the open space levy that failed, are the commissioners looking into that again? Because my understanding, I may be wrong, is if you put an open space in the middle of the Prairie, the annexation process from Rathrum to Post Falls will no longer be. So I'm just curious. If we're going to revisit that, are we going to put it back on the ballot next time?
So it just takes two of the three commissioners to decide to do that. I think for me, I would be willing to consider looking at that again. I would just want to make sure that the education piece, that we would also partner with maybe an outside group who supports it. And there was just a lot of misinformation that went around the bond the first time. So I think the education piece would be very, very important. People would call me and they'd say, you know, what do you think? Well, your taxes are going to go up if it's a bunch of houses, and your taxes are going to go up to pay for open space, which would you like?
So with the annexation process, can you explain that a little bit?
So if the county bought property in the county, then yeah, we would not have to annex into any city.
Well, in other words, would it stop that, the housing developments, right? Currently, right now, if I understand it correctly, the open space is not there. So Rathrum, in theory, could annex Post Falls, and then you would close that gap. So it could be city--
It's by private property ownership. So the private property owners have to do that. So it doesn't really have anything to do with open space. It depends on how much, if the bond would pass, how much we could buy and keep it.
Yeah, and I think what you're getting at is the fact that if there is a farm field, for example, and the county were to buy that field and just keep it as open space, it would not get annexed into a city. And so there would be a buffer, presumably if that open space was between two cities, and so that would remain. Is that kind of what your question is geared toward?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I couldn't agree more, and I'm happy to hear that Commissioner Duncan is open to this idea, because I do think that it didn't get a fair shake the first go around, and public funds cannot be used to advocate for or against a bond initiative. It would have been nice if we had a little more organization on the private sector side to really get the word out. And Commissioner Duncan is absolutely right. Your taxes are going to go up no matter what, right? The question is, which way are they going to go up more? And the argument is that an open field doesn't need classrooms, it doesn't need jail beds, it doesn't need wider roads, okay? So we have the opportunity here to buy this land, preserve the open space on the Prairie, and then also, the expense of servicing and paying off the debt, presumably that we're using a bond, will be significantly less from a tax perspective than it will when the schools levy and have another bond initiative, you know, when we need to build out more jail space, when the highway districts need to tax more for the roads. So in the long run, you save a lot more money, and I agree. And so I do hope that we can talk about that, you know, the next board session.
Yeah, that would be nice to see, pursue that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Amy Fonstrum. I wasn't sure if I was going to speak tonight, but I decided that I should. I am bringing up a situation where we met with Bruce Matarri October 3rd at 1:00 PM. We had a meeting about the LE license plate readers, and when we had our introductions, Bruce mentioned to me that he recognized my name, obviously, that he had noticed I had been posting things about him and his wife online the prior week or something like that, which is true. I in fact had posted things about, like with freedom of speech, basically. You know, I am very involved with Dan Wilson's campaign team. And as free speech, I've shared things about Sheriff Norris that I haven't liked, I've shared things about Bruce Matarri and stuff like that. But anyways, I felt, in the meeting, it became very heated, I felt very attacked, we were going back and forth. I didn't feel like it was Bruce Matarri's right to tell me what I can and can't post online. As a person of our community, I feel like I have the right to say what I want, and then obviously stand up for myself. So, online, you know, I've been harassed, all kinds of stuff. Somebody with a fake account posted private information about me, talked about my business, how people shouldn't trust me in their homes because I have a cleaning business, things like that. It was a fake account, so I can't say who did this. But then on October 15th, I was notified on my phone that I had an air tag on my car and somebody was tracking me. So I find it very coincidental. I don't know who to trust, you know, I can't say who did it. Like I said, I've been harassed by Norris's camp, or you know, his supporters and whatnot, Matarri in that meeting, I felt very uncomfortable, I'm in fear of my safety. And that's really why, you don't have to snicker, okay? I saw that remark, you know, your facial expression. I do feel in fear of my safety. I didn't say it was from you, I don't know who's behind the air tag, who's following me, any of this stuff.
Ms. Fonstrum, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, as well, I've tried to be cordial in person. Like I said, I have a right to post what I want online. I'm not trying, I'm just trying to expose things so that, you know, people know what's going on. But I've even tried to be polite and wave at Sheriff Norris. As a community member, he won't even look at me. Yesterday, when I saw him, I waved, and he literally just gets a really mad look, looks away. And I feel like he's my sheriff. Regardless of what political party I follow, or campaign on, and anything like that, he should still be waving back. I mean, that's what I feel like, it's his job, he's paid to do this. So anyways, yes, now.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming out tonight.
Yeah.
You know, this was, this is a very unusual situation. I don't, I will tell you, it's very disappointing to see the degree of balkanization that has occurred in this community, especially during election time. I don't understand, you know, if these things are happening, like how you've described them just now, I'm sorry you're going through that. I can tell you this much, you know, normally people want to record me. In this particular situation, I actually wanted to record my interactions with citizens because I didn't want them to be mischaracterized. And we are now in a new era in this county where people are now suing other people for things that they claim were said when a lot of people were there and can easily say that that was not said. And so I think, you know, at this point, where we are, it's only prudent. Right now, you're being recorded.
Yes.
And that is, you know, and that is the best way for the public to see what's happened, because how one person characterized something could be completely different when other people look at it. And so, you know, as far as having your car tracked, or what people say online, or anything like that, I'm sorry, you know, that is the world we're now in, you know? I know, me personally, I'm focused on the policies that I was elected to do. I frankly don't really get involved with the noise of the back and forth with people, you know? My hope is, is that I can spend my time talking about policies and not personalities. Because in the end, if we all agree on a person, I'm sorry, a policy, then we have something to move toward, and a goal to accomplish. You know, but questioning people, the age that they are compared to their spouse and things like that, that's all personality driven. That is not a policy-driven statement. And so that's my hope, is that we focus on policy and not personality.
Well, you didn't, when I came into the meeting, you asked me why I was talking about you online, and you demanded that, well, you said I should call you up to decide, to ask you what I can and can't post online about you. And also, just for the record, the meeting was, or you had wanted to record the meeting, the people, I was in with other people in this meeting because it was about the license plate readers, so I really didn't have any say of what's going on. I actually asked your secretary to turn it on, so there is a clip that has been retrieved of that meeting, what we could retrieve. There was a records request for that.
And that was turned over?
Yeah, we do have it.
Gladly.
Yeah, we do have it. It didn't record a whole lot, but it did record some of the conversation. But like I said, if you're concerned about policy, then when I walked in, why did you mention that you had seen me posting and you said I should call you to ask what you can and can't, or what I should be posting online?
Well, exactly what I said, which is, I didn't want the meeting to be mischaracterized. And you have characterized it in a way that I think the staff member who was there would, I'd be surprised if she would agree with that. But that's how you interpret it. And so the reality was that I wanted to record the meeting so that it was documented, so it could not be mischaracterized.
And I had no say in that, I wasn't, that wasn't, yeah. So, I mean, I'm just saying that when I, when you heard my name, you personally attacked me, so--
I didn't attack you, I just mentioned that--
Didn't even finish the meeting, so--
Well, you didn't want to finish it.
But also, I had no control over that either.
You could have stayed.
No, at that point. No, I do want to say that I agree that, you know, sometimes things are misinterpreted. But again, you're implying that the Cattaldo incident didn't happen. I personally talked to many people that were there, and it did happen, and Norris did say the things that he is being accused of. Just want to put that on record. So thank you very much, have a good evening.
So I do have one question. Did you report to law enforcement authorities that you had that air tag situation?
I have not. I've been waiting, basically in fear of going, I don't know who to go to, because I'm in fear that, of Sheriff Norris. I'm in fear, if I, I was in fear, and tonight I decided to speak out, I wasn't even going to speak out. I just decided at the last minute, I was sitting on it, I've been told by other people that I should report it to law enforcement, but I didn't know who, because I don't know who to trust. I don't trust the sheriff's department, I don't know if I can trust somebody in the city of Coeur d'Alene, I don't know. I don't know who to trust right now. So, yeah. But I have the evidence on my, I have screenshots of the tracking stuff, and obviously, it just is coincidental, it was, you know, our meeting was on the 3rd of October, and then the air tag was on the 15th of October, so that I, you know, so anyways, thank you. Any other questions? That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless anyone has any comments, I'd like to at least talk a little bit about some stuff that I touched on with Ms. Fonstrum a little bit. You know, that is, forgive me if I mispronounced your name, Fonstrum. You know, the reality is that we do focus on personality and we don't focus on policy. And if I could, I'd like to have Jonathan just put something up on the overhead. You know, one of the things that I'm going to be working on is developing a policy platform that I hope that with the community's buy-in, we can focus on achieving these policy goals. The first one is addressing or focusing on responsible growth. For anyone who wants to keep government small and limited, you can't do that when your community is growing. The single largest driver of government growth is population growth. The single largest driver of government growth is population growth. And ways that we can address responsible growth are through impact fees, which we are trying desperately to get implemented. You know, the reality is that growth doesn't pay for itself here, the people who live here are going to pay for that growth. That's the bottom line. The system in Idaho, that's the way it's set up. You know, another area that we can focus on responsible growth is with our comprehensive plan, which we're working on that right now. This board is working on that, and I hope we continue that with the next board. The community development director is already engaged with the other cities to start linking our comp plans, so we can actually have more of a community-oriented comp plan, so that the cities aren't growing mutually exclusive of the county. That's one of the biggest drivers of growth in this county, are the cities. And so when we can start engaging them and talking about how their growth is affecting even the county's ability to provide services, I think that that's really important. And for those people in this community who are conservative, if you want to maintain a conservative community, I can tell you right now, density will lead to liberal policies. There is no such thing as a conservative major city in this country. Density leads to liberal policies. And you will see the difference in the policies between the cities, the larger cities in this county, the larger cities in this state, and the more rural areas. And so I would argue that having a responsible growth policy is going to preserve conservative values in this community, much more so than build baby build, and let's get as many people here, and let's cash out on this land as much as we can. And so that's why it's the number one policy initiative for me. The next one is properly funding public safety. There's a lot of people who talk about the illegal immigration that is occurring in the southern border, they talk about human trafficking and things like that, even though that word is getting defined now, and it does not include, you know, abduction in the same way. We don't have a human trafficking problem like that. But if we don't have a strong public safety department, we're going to have what's called a very reactive law enforcement agency in this county. And there's a big difference between proactive and reactive. We saw in the past year, our prosecutor's office was down 20%. Stanley Mortensen was on the verge of deciding whether or not to prosecute misdemeanor crimes because he didn't have the bandwidth in his office to do that. I think that's the last thing we want to see happen in this community, where we're not prosecuting all crime. We're now only prosecuting the most serious crimes. And let's be candid here, the more serious crimes usually start as small crimes. So if we're not prosecuting the smaller crimes, we're going to see more serious crime as a result of that. The third policy is operational efficiency in government. And I don't mean the ability for a deputy to issue three times more tickets on their shift than they would, you know, otherwise by filling out something by hand. Rather, that we start developing efficiencies within county government so we can serve more citizens with less staff. The fact is that we have a very difficult time hiring people, and we have to keep the wages competitive. So if we can figure out more efficient ways to serve the citizens by doing more with fewer people, that leads to lower costs in the long run. And so operational efficiency is my third policy initiative. The fourth one is allocating cost to where the benefit is enjoyed. If you live in Coeur d'Alene, part of your county taxes are subsidizing law enforcement for a number of incorporated cities in the county. They have their own growth model, they have their own ability to levy taxes, but they dump that cost on the county to provide their law enforcement services. And so I would argue that we should allocate the cost to where the benefit is enjoyed. And fortunately, cities like Hayden, which have a contract with us, you know, they are paying, and they're paying for, you know, most of the law enforcement services that they consume. And so shifting that cost to where the benefit is, is another policy initiative. And the fifth one is greater transparency. You know, I believe that the citizen, you, the citizen, should see what's going on inside your own government. People who have paid attention, I've tried to push more meetings in front of the public where they're recorded, where people can see these things at their own leisure. I realized tonight, we're competing against game four of the World Series, there's probably a lot of Dodgers fans, more so than Yankees fans in this community, and, but it's videoed so people can see it at their leisure, and they can start to see where people stand on the policies. You know, showing people the numbers. You know, what are the numbers that drive our decisions? You know, when you see those numbers, then you understand. That's why we have a growth dashboard on our website, that just is some basic cursory numbers of what goes on in county government. And then the other, of course, is, you know, trying to figure out to ask the right questions. A lot of people come up to me and ask me a lot of questions, a lot of people watch, and they see some of these meetings, and they are like, that was a good question. And so asking the right questions to understand what is happening in our county government. I'm here to represent you, just like the other two commissioners up here. And so, you know, it's our job to, we're in essence elected to oversee-- And so, you know, it's our job to, we're in essence elected to oversee the government and make sure it's serving the citizens correctly. And so I would like to see us focus much more on policy. And these are the five policies I would put forth to start, to have the discussion. If people want operational efficiency over responsible growth, that's fine. But I'd like to start this conversation so we can agree on policies and have a destination of where we want to go and where we wanna end up in this community. And so with that, one, I appreciate you entertaining what I have to say, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have some. You guys are easy.
How about anybody on the telephone? Is there anybody listening in on the telephone that has any comments or questions? What about online, Jonathan? Okay, all right, Ron?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ron Hartman for the record. Topic is the County Fair. I've been attending the Commissioner meeting since last December, and on a pretty regular basis, the manager of the County Fair has presented information to the Commissioners and has presented different approaches to come with an agreement, to have some kind of policy between the Commissioners and the State Fair as to being able to grow the State Fair by getting people to invest in capital and buildings there. That Fair manager has jumped through hoops, providing all kinds of data to the Commissioners, has provided incredible amounts of data as to value that the State Fair brings to this county. The value as far as revenues, the value as far as attendance. And even this year, they added another day for the rodeo, and they still sold them all out, every day of the rodeo, well in advance of the rodeo. I went to the rodeo the night it was freezing, pouring down rain, soaking wet, and their place was still full and people went. You just read all kinds of comments from the State Fair, the people that attended it. It is time, it is past time to bring this, to have these Commissioners bring this to a vote. You're never gonna get a perfect memorandum of operation, you're never gonna get the words perfect, you're never gonna satisfy one of the Commissioners on this. And it's very clear, two of the three Commissioners are ready to move forward with this. It's time that one of these Commissioners put a motion on the table and you voted on it. It's never gonna be perfect, it's never gonna be there, it's time to quit dragging your feet, and it's time to vote. And I am requesting either Commissioner Matarri or Commissioner Brooks to put a motion on the table and vote on this. It's not gonna get perfect, and it needs to get done.
Should it at least be legal? Should it at least stand up to legal scrutiny?
The one that was brought to you this morning was agreement between your legal staff and the county manager, the fairground manager. They were satisfied. So you've got satisfaction even with your legal staff that the one that was presented today was more than appropriate, and yet it still didn't satisfy you, Leslie.
That's right, because there are still issues in there. One of the issues, too, is the fact that they're asking us to pay for services going forward. What is that number? So we're committing to paying for something going forward, we don't know what that number is.
You've been doing that for years already. This is not a new issue.
No, that's not true. She sat here today and said that she wanted us to include the other amount that they were paying.
This is never gonna be perfect, and it's never gonna satisfy you. You've proven that since the first of the year, and running this poor lady to jump through hoops and come before you on a pretty regular basis, and I think she's done an outstanding job, and it's time to vote.
Thank you.
Well, I tend to agree with the fact that we should try to find a way to keep the fairgrounds where they're at for the foreseeable future. And my hope is, is that this board can come to an agreement on how we do that. And we're either gonna figure out a way to get that done, or we're gonna focus on ways to stop that and slow it down. But I do appreciate your comments, Mr. Hartman. Anybody else? The next section is public comment, so if you wanna run through that, and if no one else has any comments.
I'll say real quick, if it's okay. As regards the County Fair, it's numbers, the numbers are important. But the emotion is important, too. And when I called the meeting, the town hall meeting for the County Fair, we had snow cones and goats and all kinds of things there, but this room was so packed, I've never seen it more packed, standing room only, and I don't think there was one person there who said, "Yeah, let's sell the fairgrounds," or "Let's cut it down." And we, as Commissioners, are like, Chris Philios used to say all the time, we're like judges in a lot of matters. And judges don't always do things by a spreadsheet. Sometimes we do things by the emotion involved, as long as it's not illegitimate emotion. I mean, we have, the people own that fairgrounds, the people in the county, at least they feel they do. And they very much want that fair to stay right there, and we need to find a way to do it. And I agree with Ron that time's a waste, and I think Alexia Jordan has done a phenomenal job keeping that fair focused, at the same time, running it like a business. So I don't have an answer. I think a vote is due, but we do have to work in accordance with the state law, so...
All right, once again, on the phone, anyone? Nobody on? Okay. Thank you guys for coming out, appreciate it.
Thank you.
6:58, meeting adjourned.